Good morning and welcome. I'd like to call to order the June 19, 2007 City of Glendale Council Budget Study Session. May we have the roll call, please? Council members Drayman, Quintero, Weaver, Eusefion, Mira Najarian.
Here.
I don't know about under budget.
Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, good morning. Just as a very quick recap, you've spent the last two or three study sessions focused on the capital improvement program. Your direction last week was to adjust the capital improvement program so that a number of rather large projects were pulled off and we created a list of, I would call them unfunded or yet to be determined, projects that you would be taking action on a capital improvement program that would essentially see its final stages resolved after the first of the year when we had more information about the various projects of interest that would be on the unfunded list. That results in a CIP with a much larger balance that was first projected because a number of items and unmet needs will still be out there yet to be prioritized. With that, I think it was a consensus that we had wrapped up the capital improvement program budget and are ready for the public input this evening and eventual formal action then at the last meeting in June. This morning, we hope to do the same thing for the general fund of the city. We'd like to give you a recap this morning, see if there are any issues that we need to address prior to adoption of the preliminary budget or issues that need to be addressed following that adoption before we would bring back to you a final budget in August or September. With that, let me turn to Ron Allers, who has, I think, done an admirable job of leading the numbers process and the review here on all these budgets and responding to your questions. Ron?
Before we go to Ron, Jim, I have two requests for priority. And just to confirm, gentlemen, would you like to be heard at this time of the meeting? Then let me interrupt Ron and go to Herbert Milano.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, City staff. My name is Herbert Milano. At this point in time, Mr. Kasakian is bringing in some information concerning documents that I want you to take a look at, if you would. I will start with the following forward, and I'd like to start with a quotation because I think it reflects my position in coming to you time and again before these budget sessions. Here's the quote: "There is no more delicate matter to take in hand, no more dangerous conduct, no more doubtful of success than to step up as a leader in the introduction of change. For he who innovates will have for his enemies all those who are well off under the current order of things and only lukewarm support in those who might be better off under the new." That's a quotation from Machiavelli. So it is considered a thankless task for someone to come here and basically state the things that, at least that I have learned, and give you a perspective that's a little bit different. If we were to measure our budget with regard to how well it attends to our quality of life, I think that is the primary measure for anything that we do with this particular budget. And I mean the quality of life for the residents of Glendale. And one of the major issues in quality of life is our safety. It was a major issue during the campaign, and it's our largest portion of our budget. Forty percent of our budget is fire and police. And the one thing that I don't see very frequently in City Council, or I don't see it as a regular report to the city, an evaluation, for example, of the police department's objectives. So I gave you a particular document that I downloaded from the web, and on page two, you take a look at the number of pedestrian-involved collisions. Year-to-date, there were 52 compared to last year, 31. If we were doing an evaluation of our safety, you would say, "My God, we have a 68 percent in pedestrian collisions," or collisions involving pedestrians. And so the question would be to ask, how are we to improve on that in future years? And what are the policies and how do we evaluate it? But unless you evaluate outcomes, then it makes it very difficult for you to prepare a potential future budget with regard to how the monies are spent. And I bring the police not because I disrespect them or because I don't care for them, but rather as a way to demonstrate the fact that we need to put attention to the outcomes in order to evaluate a budget. I also put in front of you, this is your expenditures for our general fund, I think, and the government appropriations. And I also marked on there that fire makes up 40 percent of the public safety budget. In other words, 40, 60 percent. And so I would ask you to compare those ratios with ratios from other cities and ask ourselves whether those ratios are standard with regard to our expenditures. Because I tend to believe that the police department has a much heavier load with regard to just the sheer number of calls and the amount of manpower needed. So there appears to be a significant discrepancy there. Now, if you take a look again at this particular chart, you notice how we have, for example, library at 3.7 percent, but yet this public safety area is not broken down. I would suggest that it would give us a much more clear perspective if we were to separate this public safety area into police, and the section for fire maybe should be separated into the emergency medical services and fire prevention and fire issues. It will give us a much more effective way of looking to see year-to-year how we're doing with regard to public safety. My objective is to start bringing to the city the concept of performance measures as a way of preparing a budget in future years. And it is my hope that this city will take at least one month to dedicate to the largest portion of our budget to basically evaluate our costs, especially our costs with regard to the amount of overtime. It is my hope that the city will take a hard look at overtime and hopefully reduce the amount of overtime by at least 10 percent and set other types of measures with regard to our energy policy, with regard to public works, roads and sewers and so forth, and then use that as a way of establishing the budget for next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council staff, the public. I'm Barry Allen. The budget certainly is an important issue. And just a few weeks ago, I brought to this body an indication that there was a problem with the fire department budget. And the direction to Mr. Allers at that time was, let's find out what was wrong. Last week, we heard what was wrong. There was a mistake, just a mistake. Well, that mistake went through the entire fire department, went through the finance department, went through the city managers department, never get caught. Now, it was good that you did that. However, you didn't go far enough. You didn't look at the year before's budget, where with the fund for the fire grant or fire grant fund, had about $400,000 of overtime, and the year before that, and the year before that. Now, I can't expect you to look at the years before, but certainly the current year you could have looked at because it was on the same sheet of paper. So, you know, the question is, what has happened? Don't you, as a council, care? Don't you care enough to question your staff? Obviously not. Now, we do know that two of the unions that are represented, the managers' group and the firefighters' group, paid significant money for candidates to run in the last few races, and most of them, of course, were incumbents. So it makes us, the public, rather suspect as to whether or not that money is being used for you to just kind of overlook the budget issues. And you've done that consistently. And what I would like to hear this council say today is that, you know, you're right. We have two obligations. Number one, we need to apologize to the public for our lack of oversight and our lack of insight. We also need to direct the internal auditor to review these issues over the last four or five years and see what happened to that money, where it went. Now, had this issue not been brought up two weeks ago, and you just approved the budget, what would have happened to that $485,000? And we understood that $400,000 was a mistake, but if you go down through the fact that the pension fund, the PERS, all the other budget issues for payroll were covered in there, obviously, it was more than just an oversight. It was a manipulation. And you, five gentlemen, must be aware of what is happening. You must take to task the people that have allowed this to happen over and over and over again. Now, I believe in the modified general fund, you're going to be asked to fund $200,000 for a fire recruit academy. Now, the question is, how many are they going to recruit? How many recruits are there? I haven't heard those questions asked, and therefore I haven't heard them answered. How many will there be? What about this program that Glendale, Pasadena, and Burbank were going to get together for training and those efforts? Has that fallen by the wayside? Have we developed and encouraged a sacred cow, one that no one can touch, one that has their own website, publishes their own newspaper, goes on joint fishing trips with their employees, says we're all a family, generates more overtime than any of the other departments? In fact, I venture to guess, I could be wrong, but I venture to guess, that they probably generate more overtime than all the other departments combined. It's a management issue. One of the people, one of their people, and someone else who was directly involved, said, "Well, you know, they're not administrators." Well, then it's up to you to hire administrators. You know, you have the technical people that know how to provide ambulance service and know how to fight fires, grass fires and brush fires and the few structural fires we have. Let's see some action from this council. This budget is your image, your vision of the city, at least according to Sheldon Baker. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Mr. Drayman?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Allen. And let me preface them by saying I was not endorsed by the GMA or FIRE this time or the last time I ran, so... First of all, there was a question, how many recruits? How many recruits? Anybody know?
They are, in this year, they're planning on 12 to 15 recruits to go through. And it is done on a joint academy and joint training, is done with Pasadena and Pasadena, Burbank, and the City of Glendale. The number that's requested is a direct reflection of the number of applicants. Frankly, they would like to have more than that because the turnover is such that they would like to be able to have even more funding to do more recruits. But this is what they feel is a modest amount that they can conduct the joint academy with. They think through it very strategically.
I would like to say, for my part, I did miss that, and it wasn't a matter of oversight or lack of insight or lack of interest. I can only speak for myself. I simply missed it. It's as simple as that. But I'd also like to know, Mr. Allen, the issue of manipulation. Manipulation of what and for what reason, do you think?
Well, in my personal opinion, it appears to me that this particular fund has become a slush fund. When you see two people who were assigned to that, two FTEs who were assigned to that fund last year, getting over $400,000 in overtime? And of course, the things that I've been told was basically, everybody draws from that. Well, that's a slush fund. If everybody draws from it, it's not giving you an accurate picture of what the funds are being used for. No accurate picture. Now, what was it, $150,000 for office supplies for one man department? Or everybody draws from it? It's not giving you a true figure.
Mr. Weaver and then Mr. Starbird.
Well, Mr. Mayor, before we go on through this line of description by Mr. Allen, maybe we should again review the detail that was brought to you by Mr. Allers as to that account and what occurred. He's again repeated, two people, $400,000 in overtime? That's preposterous. So let's again note what happened. And frankly, I have to say, gentlemen, for you to be aware of every item on every page of a preliminary budget of this size and all of the numbers, I can't imagine that you can do that any more than I can personally do that. You have to depend on your staff, the managers, the administrators. And in a budget this size, there are likely going to be some things that frankly, we won't catch in the process either. It's a $600 million budget spanning 15 departments and 1,000 pages of information. We try, we try to do our best. We're professionals. We don't want to lead you astray or the public, and frankly, we will not do anything that is inappropriate or unprofessional. I mean, that's our obligation to you and the public, and we take it very seriously. I would suggest we again review the answer to the questions so we don't get these kinds of outlandish statements, once again, that distort what actually occurred. Ron, can you go through it again, what that account was all about? So once again, we don't get information repeated time and time again. It's an error. About $400,000 in overtime for two people. That is not what occurred here.
Ron, Mr. Allers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. What occurred, this fund hosts a number, variety of grants from mainly the federal government. We have a disaster preparedness grant. We have a metropolitan medical grant to deal with emergency response. We have homeland security grants. There are a variety of grants in this fund. It has funded, in the past few years, a fire battalion chief to deal with interoperability issues, dealing with our radio system. It has also funded a systems analyst and half of a fire captain. And these are all in compliance with the grants that the city has received from the federal government, where these employees do charge their time because they are working on the metropolitan medical response grant, or they are working on the homeland security grant. With regard to the statement of purchasing office supplies, the account is actually called general supplies. We have a separate account for office supplies. The general supplies is actually purchasing the antidotes that we've read about in the paper, where for our emergency medical response, we have purchased antidotes. So that's where it goes. It goes into supplies, because that's what it is. It goes into an inventory that is accounted for by the fire department and ready for a response should there need arise for one from the fire department. So these supplies are for purchasing emergency medical response or purchasing for disaster preparedness kits and so forth. They are not office supplies.
Mr. Starbird.
And let me just note, because all of these grant programs, as we noted in the discussion over the use of the, I forget what the inoculations were for.
Anthrax.
Yeah, the anthrax inoculations. These are grant programs, and frankly, it would be very easy to not apply for, to not work, to get, because they are generally competitive, they take a great deal of time. They do give us, when we secure them, the opportunity to use resources to have additional staff running those programs, like MMRS, that is a tremendous resource for this community. And we're fortunate to be able to be designated one. But frankly, we don't get to maintain that status just by the fact that we're a city over 150,000 population. If you don't meet the federal standards that were rather rigorous, then you'll be decertified, and we won't have the benefit of these programs. Once again, these funds are maintained in special grant funds, right, Ron?
Correct.
Legally, they can only be spent and allocated on the items that the federal government has approved to the grant program. Any funds not spent remain in those funds. I mean, remain in those accounts and can't be transferred for other purposes. Right, Ron?
That is correct.
Okay, there's one other issue that was raised, and that is the account status for years prior. And although there was, you know, discovered this year, was there anything that's suspect for the year last year and perhaps the year before?
No, there is nothing suspect. What the error was, is that in prior years, we had funded the fire battalion chief, the systems analyst, a portion of the fire captain. So all those expenses were approved to be expensed by the federal grants in question. And now, the only position funded by the grant is one administrative associate. So we have corrected that error for fiscal year 2007, '08, and reduced the salaries and associated benefits down to that one position of administrative associate.
And I should note, Mr. Mayor, during those years, those people were taken out of our normal fire operations, and their time was dedicated to these special programs. So appropriately, the general fund that funds the fire department is able to recover those costs and fund replacement positions so that the operations don't suffer by taking on these special programs, something that I think you and the public would want us to do, rather than draw on our existing resources, diminish existing operations to run these important special programs.
Okay, I've been, just to make it clear, not to beat the dead horse, but I've been handed a spreadsheet with the year, let me show this to you, Ron, for the year 2006, 2007, and apparently this line item is circled, and I think the indication is that it did exist last year as well. I'm going to hand this to you so you know what I'm talking about.
And I'd like you to look at this, but then I'm going to go to Mr. Weaver and come back to you for a comment on it. If you were, were you done, Mr. Drayman?
No, I just, I am done, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to raise the question so we could address.
Okay, so let's go to Mr. Weaver, and we'll come back to Ron to take a look at that.
Well, for the record, I was not endorsed by the police, nor the fire, nor management, and I was reelected, and I'm sitting here today. If I had my way and I was to invite any of the associations, I'd tell them all, stay out of politics. Don't endorse any of us. Since people like Mr. Allen have arrived in town and have tried to associate support for a candidate with some form of corruption, I think you all ought to stay out of it. Just let us reelect on our own. I managed to do that. The others can do the same thing. I worked on budgets for over 30 years of my lifetime. Half my lifetime has been involved in budgets. And I've never, ever heard the kind of stuff, I can put it mildly, that it's coming out of the mouths of people like Mr. Allen, who say they represent the public, whoever they are. Manipulation, corruption, slush funds. He doesn't even begin to understand what a budget is. A budget is totally different than when you account for your expenditures, whatever on, during the year. He understood, Mr. Allen basically understood a contract or understood a budget, he wouldn't be saying the things he does. He can sit there with a smile on his face and continue, continue to talk about all this stuff. It's insulting to the public of this city. I get not one single call from anybody saying, "Oh, we believe Mr. Allen's right," and talking about manipulation, corruption, slush funds. This is a very well-run city. We have internal auditors, we have external auditors. And it can, you hear this week after week, trying to insinuate that the city manager and the staff are settling the fives down the rosy path of corruption. We don't know? Hey, Mr. Allen, why don't you go down to the City of L.A. or some of the other cities and try them on for size? This is a well-managed city. And if I sound irritated, I am. I'm sick and tired of these people out here, these departments, being attacked week after week, and you're not going to stop. You're sitting there with a smile on your face, and you're going to be back next week and next week and the following week for the next two years, and hope that we can get the city manager fired, the city attorney fired, and get people in that'll do it the way you want. I have news for you, it isn't going to happen on my watch.
Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, we're happy to respond to the questions. Let me ask either Assistant Chief Scoggins or Bat Chief Howard, can you respond to the questions raised about the previous year's budget? Steve, if you would.
Happy to. Good morning, Mayor Najarian, council members.
Morning, Chief.
Several deputy fire chiefs for operations, several, I'll just call them allegations, have been made about the fire grants. I'll make it really clear, not only for you, but for the public that's out there, no fire department employee was paid $485,000. That never happened. Every one of the positions that we had handling or working within the fire grant area was paid an appropriate city salary with benefits that was there. No one got any extra amounts of money. The overtime money that was paid, that was paid in several areas. One of the areas that it was paid is that we were allowed to improve upon our USAR program and our disaster preparedness.
USAR is what?
Urban Search and Rescue. And what we needed to do was to train firefighters to get up to the skill level that would allow them to operate at the highest level, and we do have the highest level of a USAR team in the community here. To do that, we had to go to specialized training. And when we went to specialized training, we had two types of, I'll call it overtime. One of them was overtime for the individual attending this class on his regular day off. The other overtime, which really isn't overtime, it's staffing, was to hire back for that individual when they were gone to the specialized training so that we maintain our staffing on the fire companies.
How many people trained, Steve?
We had approximately 30 people that were trained. Not all of them needed every class because we had been working along the way. So that's a good round number. That's one half of, the other part is, we have a hazmat program, hazardous material response. We've had that in a community for well over 15 years, and we've been able to bring additional people in, go to specialized training. So we've spent monies in those areas. And then there are other classes, there are a minority amount of classes that we've gone to. These are all specialized training classes that we sent individuals to. We've either had a small amount of overtime for an individual or a much larger amount of staffing cost to maintain the fire and EMS protection in the community.
Steve, when we make a grant application like this, do we spell all these details out in the grant application?
Every one of them. We can't spend one dime without getting approval from the grantor, whether that's at the regional level, the state level, or the federal level. And we do that ahead of time so that we don't expend city money and not get reimbursed for it. And we've done that consistently. We can bring the details for you, and there are lots of details that are there. But everything has been done according to the regulations that we agreed to when we accepted the grant, and we have done everything correctly. The allegations are very troubling to me.
Well, what's this about this fishing trip you guys go on?
You know...
How come I'm not invited?
You know...
It's better I'm not. Better. Strike that.
Let me make one comment. I don't know what Mr. Allen is talking about specifically on a fishing trip, but let me make one comment about one fishing trip that takes place. One fishing trip that takes place is a group of firefighters and police officers on their off-duty days that go on a fishing, I'll call it a competition. All of the funds that are raised from that go to the quest for firefighter burn survivors. It's a charity fundraiser. These all happen on days off. Now, if that's what he's referring to, I take great offense to that, and I believe the public takes great offense to that.
Thank you, Chief.
About travel on Harley-Davidsons, I've heard about Harley-Davidson motorcades that take place.
Yeah? We have members that do have Harley-Davidsons.
Gangs, motorcycle gangs.
Motorcycles, and participate in...
Old guys on Harley-Davidsons.
And fundraisers for that, too.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Eusefion.
Well, a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Milano brought up the issue of the police and the pedestrian that was involved in accidents here today. And I just want, I know Mr. Milano's not here, but Mr. Milano showed this document to us. This is a document that we get in City Council. We, every two weeks or so, the police department provides us with a document with statistics like this. Also, the fire department provides us with documents like this. There's been going on for the last year or so. Prior to that, we didn't get it, but they're providing that information, which is very helpful. I do read it. Maybe I don't have a life, but I do read all these and go through the statistics. And there are some times that I get, you know, concerned about some issues, and I talk to the fire chief or the police chief. But let's deal with this particular incident. And he talks, yesterday, there has been a pedestrian-involved accident, 52 over last year, which was 31. There was a 21 increase. But that would actually create some problems for me unless I read the line below, which says the number of traffic tickets that were issued this year. So I go, okay, is the police department kind of sleeping at the donut shop, as everybody has a tendency to anecdotally think about? Well, I look at it, and it says citations, 7,304 issued this year compared to 7,118, which means there was an additional 186. So the police department was more active out there, giving more tickets. So, the police department was more active out there, giving more tickets. And then I look at vehicle pursuits compared to last year to this year. This year, we had forty-seven. Last year, we had twelve. There's a thirty-five more pursuits. So, what it basically tells me is they are more active. Drunk driving arrests, two hundred and forty-four compared to two hundred and thirty-six. There were eight more arrests this year than there were last year. So, it's not that the police department is sleep. It just maybe people's behavior has changed. And how much further do you go trying to curtail that? If the numbers were reversed, that means we had less traffic citations and more accidents, I would say the police department is not doing their job. Maybe they need to increase it. And so, there is some thing to Mr. Milano's discussion, which is, I would like to see a breakdown on the public safety on this chart to go from-- so, to show you how much of that is fire and how much of this is police. That would be helpful. I don't know if you can break down the EMS from the fire because in many cases, you have the same firefighter going to EMS and going to fire. So, it's going to be very difficult as far as that budget is concerned. Now, as far as Mr. Allen is concerned, let me say my piece, and it may be different. I do not like making fun of people, you know, when they speak. People have a right to come in here and say their piece. They have their First Amendment constitutional rights. And I think what we sometimes try to jokingly get away is the fact that, yeah, we missed it. Mr. Draymond's the only one who said it. We missed it. It's true. We missed it, and we missed it for several years. The issue to me isn't that there was something nefarious going on. The issue is, when the budget was prepared, the finance department or the fire department, when they reviewed it before it came to us, they needed to clarify the item a little bit better. So, you don't put down one administrative assistant and put $480,000 in front of it. So, what you do is you take your $480,000 and you break it down. So, then, there is clarification, what happened and where the money went, and this discussion would have never taken place. I'm glad he brought it up because we got more educated. I think all of us on this dais got more educated. None of us had a clue how that money was being spent. But to me, I think every time public comes and they find something, it's our responsibility to look into it. And I would hope, and Mr. Starbuck was also right, there is no way in heck I'm going to know every single line in this. And you know what? I take it for what they presented to me. I do not go to department heads and say, "This number you put in here, is it accurate or it's not?" I am assuming it's accurate because they're the man in charge. That's what they get paid on every day they draw salary. I don't do that. So, I basically take that information and look from above and say, "This is the budget." But it's their responsibilities, the responsibility of city manager and assistant city manager and the Department of Finance to make sure those numbers are accurate and it's an accurate reflection. So, when a citizen gets a hold of the documents and got nothing to do and they want to read through it, it makes sense. And so, I hope in the future, we'll be a little bit more careful as we start lumping things together. Maybe we shouldn't be doing that. Maybe we need to be more accurate. Maybe this document will be thicker, but I think we'll have less headaches as we deal with it. So, that's most-- those are my comments.
Was there any further response from Mr. Allers on this? Okay, therefore, I'd like to move on to the general fund issues that we're here to focus on. Mr. Allers?
I will start us off on slide number three with a short recap of where we are. Thank you. Last year, 2005-6, this is kind of a three-year look at actuals and our budget upcoming. Last year in 2005-6, we had a net change in fund balance, if you draw your attention all the way down near the bottom of the screen, of a negative $1.7 million in our general fund. This was mainly due to transfers out to purchase land in '05-'06, specifically Flint Canyon. Otherwise, we would have had a surplus in last year's general fund, just ongoing revenues subtracting out ongoing expenses, thus the transfer for the land purchase. For '06-'07, notice that the net change in fund balance is a positive $6.4 million, and it's actually a little bit higher. If I'll draw your attention up a couple lines to transfers out to permit services fund. What we are proposing is to transfer out $2 million to a new fund to basically ride the ups and downs in our permit services department, depending on how many plans come in for review and permits are issued. This will allow Mr. Zern to basically contract out for services when there's a huge demand for permit services. And then, when there is that, and to contract out for those services, and then when there's not, then he doesn't need to contract out so much. We have, this year, we projected about $3.5 million coming in in permit revenue, and it's safe to say that Willie will take in actually about $5.5 million. So, that's where this $2 million comes from, is actual $2 million over their budget specifically for building permit revenue.
Mr. Yosefian?
I do not agree with that. And I would say that to Mr. Zern. As we talked in the city many, many years under the twelve guiding principle or twelve points of light when Eltivar happened, there is a strong tendency among the public. They would rather have us hire our own plan checkers so they're responsible for the work. I have issues with having a $2 million fund out there so we could use outside consultants. It is a lot cheaper for us to hire a person and have them do the work. It's almost seventy-five percent cheaper. Seventy-five percent. I know the consultants they're going to go for. I know the contracts we've had with them, and I'm not saying that they are not qualified. But we can hire people, and we have had people in this city that are as qualified, if not more qualified, than some of the consultants we send to. So, I think the answer should be, instead of spending $2 million and spend it within a year, half a million dollars easily, a million easily you could spend in a year. But what your biggest problem currently is in that department is you don't have enough plan checkers, and you need to hire plan checkers. I know it's difficult to hire them, but the public want people working for the city so they're accountable to the city. Consultants aren't. Consultant's going to take his money and run. And so, that's the issue that I have with this. I understand once in a blue moon, we hire a consultant to maybe deal with something extraordinary like the town center.
Right.
I can understand that. But most of the time, there's a lot of single-family homes, apartments, condos, and all that stuff. And so, those are the issues I have issue with this.
Mrs. Starbuck?
Just an observation. I mean, a lot of what Mr. Yosefian says is correct relative to, I think, sometimes both quality and control. But you have to weigh the pros and cons of staffing up, so to speak, which usually government organizations are criticized for staffing up. And then, when the lean times come, you've got a larger staff than you need. And of course, as we know, you very seldom lay off in the public sector versus-- so, there's the advantage of staffing up and the quality control that you have with that versus the downside of when something like building permits as a revenue does go down, and building activity can be rather volatile with its ups and downs. Then, you have staff that frankly, you may not have the resources to support. So, it's a need to balance, the combination of having an adequate number of staff members so you can-- you're not just aiming for the peaks, you're aiming for sort of the midpoint. And then, frankly, I think a good conservative philosophy is to then use consultants to meet the peak demand so that you can very easily then cut back and come back to a base that's more reasonable. The other point is, and this is reflected in numbers, our concern has been, if we anticipate that this year's level of building permit revenues and next year's level, what we anticipate will continue to be a relatively high level of permit revenues, if we begin to take that in as if it is ongoing, and that's a sizable number, upwards of $2 million, more than what we would normally expect in a given normal year, then we could be very surprised when building activities do drop off, and then we have become rather dependent on that additional resources. So, the thought has been to, whether we hire in-house people or whether we use consultants, create a revolving fund so we can utilize the highs of the revenues, not depend on them permanently, but utilize them to create a fund that we then can take some of the highs and lows out of our revenues in building permits and maintain, whether it's through staffing levels or through consulting levels, a level of work that is needed to meet the needs in the community. One thing is for sure from my perspective, if developers pay for the services, we should be providing the services. The other component here, as Steve will probably note, is just in the marketplace, the ability to get these people. They are in high demand right now. I mean, frankly, they're the ones who can go to work for the consulting firms, making considerably more than we will pay them in the public sector. Granted, that may not be as long-lasting and as secure, but they'll be offering rates for people in the private sector that far outstrip what we can offer in the public sector.
I share Mr. Starbuck's concerns about the bloating, the payroll--
I tried to avoid the term "bloating."
Well--
[laughing]
I didn't say it, someone else is going to say it. And then, in a down cycle, have these employees that you've grown, you know, you go fishing together and all that other stuff, and then you're afraid to cut them from the staff. So, balancing that with-- and is it more expensive to hire an independent contractor than a staffer with the hers and the medical and all that other stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Yosefian, just to add on to what Mr. Starbuck said, and Mr. Yosefian, most of your points I agree wholeheartedly with. We would rather do it in-house than send it out. Where the cost difference comes is, you're charging a fee for the permit, you're making more money when it's done in-house versus then sending it to a consultant because they take virtually all of the fee to do their work, about ninety percent of it. Whereas, we're getting about forty percent of the fee by doing it in-house through the formula we have. As Mr. Starbuck stated, and as you commented, Mr. Mayor, it has always been our policy to try to find that happy medium where we can meet ongoing demands, not overstaff so that when we get into the valley periods, we've got too many people. But then, that leaves us, when we get into these peak periods, how to respond to those. And Mr. Yosefian, in this particular case, it simply got to be that the backlog was too far, too large. It was fifty-some days. We were nearing fifty days. In my opinion, that was too much time for people to have to wait. As Mr. Starbuck said, you pay the fee, you put your plan in, that's too long. So, we took consultants and tried to get that down, to which we did. We were very successful in getting that down. And we're probably closer to maybe thirty days, twenty-five to thirty days, which is where we'd like to be. And that's including all of the large projects we have going on now.
Is that a performance measure you're talking about?
We've used it internally as a performance measure.
Very good. Don't be ashamed of saying it.
To us, the backlog is definitely a measure of our effectiveness and efficiency.
But your problem is, you do not have enough people in that department. You lost several people from that department, and you have not been able to hire into that department for simply one reason. We do not compensate plan checkers at the rate that the market is willing to pay. So, if we compensate and hire people at the market level, we will be able to deal with it, and you would have less problems of doing this. It'd still be cheaper for us. If you were able to go back to where your plan checker's numbers was two years ago, things will be smoother. Where we ended up having problems is, at one point, we lost two or three plan checkers. And they went to other city, they got better pay. One of them, I think, went private. So, I think if you take part of these $2 million, and we still got those positions open, by the way--
Got several positions.
Right. So, those positions are open. It's-- they're in the budget. So, if we added a little bit of that $2 million to that budget, we would be able to fill those three positions, and we can actually make more money because we could bring back the whole business of, what is that, the speed plan check or--
Express.
Express plan check, which we make a lot of money on that thing. So, that's what I'm talking about. I'd rather keep the money to our own people and keep the profit here rather than give the profit somewhere else. So, you're taking a very quick solution, and the $2 million is a very quick solution. My suggestion is, try to figure out a better way of dealing with the issue. Instead of putting $2 million to some weldon and he will take it and run with it, you know, do something else with it.
Mr. Quintero first and Mr. Starbuck?
Well, we're looking in the rearview mirror. The building boom is coming to an end. Read the L.A. Times today, the financial section, there's a very good article. It hasn't affected Glendale that much yet. I think it has, not that much, but it certainly will. So, I think we're being prudent in doing these consultants. And yeah, if we can hire a couple of new plan checkers, I think we're all better off. But I don't want to restaff and overstaff for something that we don't know what's going to be happening in the next year, eighteen months, or even two years. So, I say we fill whatever positions were open and call it a day.
Mr. Starbuck?
Mr. Mayor, we should note, lest it become another item that we're responding to later on at a subsequent council meeting, we wouldn't anticipate spending that $2 million in one year on consulting service, not by a long shot. What we've done, though, is we've pulled out the extraordinary level of revenues. So, again, we don't become dependent on it for basic services in the general fund, and then next year or the year after, when revenues do drop, suddenly we're scurrying around to make up for lost revenue. Steve, I think your estimate in the upcoming fiscal year was maybe an additional quarter of a million dollars for contract services. The remainder, if indeed that occurred, the remainder of that money would either stay in that fund, or frankly, you could decide to pull it back into the reserve and the general fund, you could allocate it to CIP, or you could use it for some other purpose. My recommendation would always be, if you did utilize the money, use it for one-time costs, not for ongoing operations. Otherwise, then you become dependent on it, and it might not continue long-term.
So, is this a reserve fund then?
Yes.
Yes, it would be in a reserve fund.
Or, Mr. Mayor--
Okay, so, maybe that's what it needs to be called.
And I don't know that we need that much--
Permit service reserve fund.
And it would be only used, again, and I can tell you right now, the only time I'd go to that money would be if our backlog got back to that period, and I don't think we should ever let it get to fifty. But if I could, just comment on a couple of other things that were mentioned so that you know where we're at as well. And Mr. Quintero, you're right, we don't want to ever staff to the building boom. But one thing unique about Glendale is, we issue a lot of permits on a consistent basis. We push a lot of permits in Glendale. You have very high property values, very nice homes. Folks, for a variety of reasons, have a tendency to want to fix that home up or add on to that home versus trying to switch homes. We have a lot of businesses that come in. So, our permit activity is high. We never take the Americana's in the embassy suites as, you know, those aren't factors we use to determine our staffing levels. So, you're absolutely right, Mr. Quintero, but we do have a high level of permit issuance. Mr. Yosefian, we are in the process of going back through and reorganizing the operation. We think we're probably a position lower than we should be even with the vacancies. And that's something Mr. McFaul and I, and Mr. Doyle, will be talking about, in addition to reviewing what our salary structures are. About three years ago or so, Matt, and we did restructure the salaries, but it is a market that is so dynamic. It's not just the salaries. The talent pool, the number of individuals who are qualified to do this, is very, very small, very small.
I said, you know, that's the point I'm trying to make. That has been the case for years now. That may not be the case a year from now, eighteen months from now.
If the boom goes.
There's going to be lots of folks that are going to be unemployed in the construction trade, including those that have major experience with Class A buildings, et cetera. It's already happening at UCLA, where engineers and contractors and building inspectors are actually going to begin to be laid off. So, you know, that's--
Mr. Starbuck?
Mr. Mayor, I've been through this kind of cycle on several occasions in my career, and I will tell you that when that occurs, and it will occur in time, then we won't find it as difficult to find quality people out of the trades in the building industry to fill these civil service jobs. I mean, that's usually the way it goes. Right now, very hard. If indeed there is a slowdown, they'll be filling out their applications.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on, Ron.
Another item on this slide that I wanted to cover-- Another item on this slide that I wanted to cover is our, at the top, the economic contingency for the UUT. As a reminder for the council, we had a study session a little over a year ago with Bob Franz and Don Maynor regarding the threats to our UUT. And at that time, it was council's direction, and we implemented a $4 million reserve in our general fund to take care of, to kind of float us for one year, if you will, if we did lose out on revenue specifically regarding wireless carriers and their collection of the UUT. And we set aside $4 million for that, and that basically buys us about a year.
So, why isn't it in '05, '06, it does not show the $4 million?
We implemented that for the beginning of year 2006, '07.
Okay, so that's.
That's why it shows $4 million.
Is the '07, '08 new money, or is the same?
No, the '07, '08 is the same money.
Okay.
So, that July 1st total fund balance line, if you will, that is our general fund reserve.
And if we lose UUT, how much do we lose? $4 million?
We could lose up to $5 million a year in revenue.
So, it's contingency fund, you're setting aside just in case.
We're setting aside just in case so that we could implement our strategies over a one-year period, so that we could reduce our operating expenses in order to reflect that loss of ongoing revenue.
Good way to go. So, where would you get your extra $1 million, from the general fund reserve? You said $5 million?
Right. It could be upwards of $5 million, depends on calculations and everything, methodology, so we set aside $4.
All right.
Okay. I'll skip ahead to slide number seven for our general fund changes. We covered this last week, but there's been a few modifications and additions and deletions to this slide. And there's actually a change from what is printed in your handout to what is on the screen, which I shall cover. I thought I had put in one line item last night, and I inadvertently left it out, for whatever reason. So, let me go over this slide one more time. Beginning surplus of $1,540,000 in the general fund for next year, for 2007, '08. We will, this is changes from our preliminary budget book that you have.
So, the big yellow document is what you're referring to, changes to this?
Changes to the preliminary budget document. We will add new revenues of $277,500. We will add additional appropriations of $2,075,701, which we covered a majority of that list last week, and we'll finish that this week. We are proposing to use prior surplus of $193,000 and to increase our budget expenditure, budget under expenditure by $400,000. The use of prior surplus of an additional $193,000 is for all one-time items, be it internal audit for a peer review or painting the doctor's house, and all those expenses are listed in the coming pages.
Mr. Weaver.
Ron, isn't it true, if you had the time and the manpower, you could revise the budget every single month of the year to reflect actuals?
Oh, yeah.
Right? Revenue and expenditures.
We could do that, that would be a decent amount of additional manpower.
Budget is simply an estimate of revenue and expenditures and proposed projects and services the city intends to provide for the year.
Correct.
And you do corrective measures, at least at the end of the year and sometimes at six months, right?
Correct, and we are instituting a quarterly budget review now.
Now, we'll do it quarterly.
Now, we'll do it quarterly.
Standby for monthly.
When you say increase the budget under expenditure?
Yes, sir.
Is there a clear way of explaining that?
This is, yes, we could term this estimated salary savings, because that is the majority of where it comes from. This is a longstanding term here at the City of Glendale. So, we could, we have currently 130 vacant positions in our general fund, and this is just normal turnover and attrition as people retire or quit and find another job, and we replace them with new staff. So, we do budget for each position and at their full salary plus benefit load. And we know we will have salary savings at the end of each year. For this current year, it is pegged at 1.3 million. For this budget, along with this increase, we are recommending that it go to a flat $2 million for this salary savings.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Mr. Starbird.
We know by experience that, in a very conservative fashion, we will generate 1% to 1.5% savings at the end of the year. Most years, in fact, the vast majority of years, it's considerably more than that. If you look at the estimated year-end savings for '06, '07, which is the current fiscal year, it'll be in the neighborhood of $8.5 million?
Correct.
So, the, a number of years ago, the comment was made, I think, by council members, if we know we're gonna have these savings, then why don't we recognize them instead of essentially under-budgeting, so to speak? And so, this has been an attempt to try and do that, but again, in a very cautious, conservative way, so that we don't depend on something that we're then surprised about when maybe we have a year when, for various reasons, staffing is up to the level that's been authorized and we don't have the level of savings we've anticipated. So, we try and keep this number very conservative.
Okay, thank you.
This is a change from last week on slide number eight for proposed revenue changes. We already talked about the increase in the building permit of $1.5 million last week. For the addition this week is local grants from Seroptimus of $27,500, and this is for the program Rosie Goes to Wall Street. So, this is a grant from the Seroptimus of $27,500, and you will see an equal increase in the appropriation in a couple slides for the same $27,500. So, this is no net change, it's zero because it's being funded by a local grant. On slide number nine, we went through this list last week.
Hold on, I got a question.
Sure.
There's a line item over there that is asked for auto allowance for assistant director for library. Question, she's covered under GMAs, isn't she? Is she part of?
Yes, she is part of GMA.
Okay, doesn't GMA in their contract have something in there for auto allowance?
I don't think it specifically delineates out the positions, it delineates out the dollar amount.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Doesn't members of the GMA get something, I thought my understanding.
The finance department determines who gets auto allowances. There is a provision, you have a very good memory, there is a provision for an adjustment of those receiving auto allowance for an increase. I believe it's by $50 this year. But it doesn't specifically designate who gets it. That's made by a decision between finance and the city manager's office.
Okay, I see. Okay, thank you.
Slide number 10, we went through last week, and I added per council direction last week, the price increase in the asphalt of $60,000 and the price increase in the concrete of $40,000. So, that is now added to the totals. And this is the slide that we left off of last week. So, you will see on the first item, the top of the page is Rosie Goes to Wall Street. Again, this is funded by the local grant, $27,500. In Public Works, in Building and Safety, is new chairs and furniture of $20 grand, again, per council direction.
Also, my, oh, slides don't match, okay.
This is the one change.
You don't have the Seroptimus number on there.
Thank you.
So, it's not just that page, there's more of them?
This was, this is the one that I forgot to add last night. So, this was the only thing that I added.
Rosie Goes to Wall Street trickles down through this table, to the total, right?
Correct.
But everything else is the same.
Everything else is the same. So, thank you for catching that, Mr. Yusefian. New Chairs and Furniture is $20 grand for Public Works. Public Works also maintenance services, indigenous tree ordinance and street tree planning, $136,000. This is, we're actually using $73,000 for one time. What we receive every year is approximately $63,000 in donations for street trees, to plant new street trees. So, this is reflecting that program. So, the increases in the appropriation of 136 is catching up on the one time, we have $73,000 that we have received in years past in donations, that has not yet been spent on new street trees.
Okay.
And we have an annual of 63.
What happens, for example, the guy who cut the tree in Chevy Chase, that's $17,000? What happens to all of those fines? Or people who, through development, they go pull a permit and they gotta cut a tree or whatever, a replacement cost, and they pay $24,000, $30,000? What happens to that money? Where does that go? Does it go in this account?
I believe it does go in this account, and I'll refer to, I'll defer to Mr. Zern.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Yusefian, I think it goes into a miscellaneous, this is an expenditure account.
Right.
This is simply transferring existing monies over to Public Works from parks as a result of the change.
The question is, what happens to those fines and fords of fines?
My understanding is that eventually they get here.
Right.
But they come into finance in a different account, their book is revenue in a different account, and then they eventually get here for us to do what we need to do.
Because you're issuing the permits now.
Correct.
Not the parks.
Correct.
So, as you issue the permits and people pay you the fee, that money goes into this account that you spend out of it?
Right, it'll eventually get to us in this account. This is simply the transition from parks to Public Works. We'll get the money. That money will come back to us to fund our administrative costs, if we need outside arborists, if we need to plant the trees. And they have, we take that money and put it in there, and that's, and the fines. And the fines go, you know, once we get those fines, if it's either to replant trees that were cut or damaged, or we use those monies to plant trees in other parts of the city.
Right, because in the past, the money has been spent for other things. And I want to make sure, if people are paying fines for trees to be removed, money should be spent to put trees back in, whether it's over there, and if it's not gonna be over there, then somewhere else. So, our, because we are short, according to you, 15,000 trees in our urban area, urban trees. So, we need to start replanting some of those.
Correct, and my understanding is although it may come in a different way and get to this a different way, it has to go through a couple of procedures, that generally, it's an urban forestry account that it comes back into.
Right.
And that's what we intend to spend it on.
Mr. Starbird.
Just a quick comment and observation on Mr. Yusefian's comment that we are short 15,000 trees. So, we understand what the figure is that Steve gave you, because my first impression was by saying we're short, we've got places out there where trees either used to be or should be, but they're not.
Right.
Steve, explain what you mean by the 15,000 trees.
The 15,000 vacancies is what we got, and we do have a certain number of, as we catch up, to replace trees that were either damaged or removed because of disease. The 15,000 number are vacancies that have never had a tree, that we believe could very well take a tree.
So, a large number of these are streets that have never had trees. They could have trees if the council wanted to have trees on them, but it's not as if we're short, meaning there was a forest out there of 77,000 trees, and suddenly, we're now missing 15,000 of them through death or disease or what have you. It would really be an expansion of the urban forest to go into those streets and put street trees.
So, then the number is even higher.
Well.
Because I know places that there used to be trees there, they're no longer tree there, and there haven't been a tree there for the last 15 years that I know of.
And that could be part of the 15,000, but it's not the entire 15,000, is the point.
And our forest has grown every year for the last several years, just by the planting that we're doing so, and.
Steve, I think more plant, trees we plant, it's better for our air quality, it's better our reducing our heat, I mean, it is the best thing there is.
Yes, we agree.
Okay, so, maybe you should use, some of GWP has a tree program. I don't know how many people use it, make advantage of those to plant trees in their backyard. Burbank has them, and if they have excess money in those every year, they don't use them, use them to plant trees in the streets. That's the best thing we could do for our area.
We agree, Mr. Yusefian. In fact, at the end of the year, as we count up and see where we have savings, we try to push that towards tree purchases, so we definitely agree with you.
Please, go.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is annual software maintenance of $240,000 in our information services department. This is an increase in the appropriation. What information services has done in the past is that they have utilized salary savings for the last few years to pay for the annual maintenance of a number of different software packages, be it PeopleSoft or Oracle or CSI, and they have dozens of software packages that they pay for. But this is coming true to, this is the increase that they need in order to pay for just this annual maintenance of the software, $240,000. Next item is fire CERT training. CERT stands for Community Emergency Response. And what we had done this year is, we had taken a closer look at the fire department and their salaries and benefits and so forth, and we had, excuse me, we had actually reduced their budget for fire salaries to match up with their actual staffing. Unfortunately, in that reduction, I had taken out the money for the CERT training. Council had inserted money for CERT training for 2006, '07 and 2007, '08, so it's in this current year budget in '06, '07, but I had inadvertently taken it out for '07, '08 as I was truing up their salary budget. So, we need to add this CERT training back into their salary structure of $47,500. The next two items are basically increases that the city is experiencing. One is the electricity rate increase that council already approved, that goes into effect July 1, '07. We are estimating that that will cost the general fund $150,000 this following year. So, we are proposing that we fund that at $75,000 for all of the affected departments that pay for the electricity bill.
So, what do you do with the other $75,000? Do you write a personal check for it?
That means the departments will need to find savings in their own budget, because they'll still incur the cost, or reduce their cost, or find savings elsewhere in their budget.
Reduce the usage. Well, we have, this budget actually reflects two increases for electricity and for fuel. One, we have fully funded the increase that has been experienced in this past two-year period of time, that's on the previous sheets. This is the next one. We've met with the departments and we have said, you have to simply reduce consumption. And there are ways that they can do that, actually going back to what you'd mentioned in the public benefit charge. Parks and Recreation is under a very aggressive relapping program on ball fields. So, we think that it is prudent that we approach this two ways. It is fair to provide the departments additional money, but it's also reasonable to expect that we simply have to find ways to just reduce our consumption.
Right, but I, my issue, and that's fine this time around, because I think we adjusted earlier. My concern is that we don't arbitrarily go in there and do this every time, because what will happen is, guess what? We're gonna have to readjust this every time in the quarter. And this was one of the items that the internal auditor's picked on, is we had this assumption that gas prices are gonna stay normal, and it wasn't. They spend the money, then they come back to us every quarter and say, give us more money. And then we scream at them, why are you out? And I don't want them cutting from programs to pay for power and, I mean, power is us. We control the money, and we know the prices are gonna go up. And there's so much, maybe for the next two, three years, they can use the public benefit money to catch up. But after they have completely done that, there isn't much else to do. So, need to keep that in mind. But I think it's okay for this time.
It's the same for the next slide item, the fuel cost increases. Again, we are funding them at 50% and telling, and requiring the departments to reduce their consumption for gasoline, basically.
And this is another item. We need to take measures to change some of our fleet, to be more, more, I mean, I see, when I come to park, there's a whole bunch of white cars parked there.
Completely agree.
And with exception of one or two hybrid, everything else is regular.
We completely agree.
So.
And we will be.
That's another thing.
We will be.
The next line item is salary adjustment reserve. We have a number of positions that are requesting to be adjusted up to the average or to get them close to the average of the market. So, this is our reserve, and this is, excuse me, what we are speaking with council with during negotiations.
And this will cover us?
Yes. This will cover, for these that we're dealing with in negotiations, this will cover us. There's another one down at the bottom, which I'll explain.
What is position reallocations?
Position reallocations are employees that have increased their skill level and their knowledge, and they are now working at a higher level, and so this is reflecting that.
Oh, you mean the promotion?
If you want to term it as promotion, yes.
But they're not a new position, they're somebody who just goes from a one to a two because they've met the various requirements. requirements and they're working at that level, for example.
So it's not, it's the step?
No, it's not the step.
No, it's not the step.
It's not the step. It would be a new, let's say you have a series of positions that's, entry level is a one, next level is a two, next level is a three.
Okay.
This could be somebody who's working at a one level, they meet the qualifications, they have the experience, and they're being worked at a level reflective of a two. Well, then this would be looking at that position and allocating additional money so they can now become a two in whatever the series is.
But isn't that position, if it's not a step, if it's not, if that position isn't funded already, is he replacing somebody else?
No.
No.
And that's the difference, is they're not replacing somebody else, there's not a position that's open. It's a reallocation of that one position from a one to a two, in the example I've used.
For example, in the finance department, they will often hire an entry-level position on a pre-accountant-type position. After a year or so, they get experience that will take them up to an accountant level. So that position is reallocated from whatever they are hired at at entry level to an actual accountant. There's an incremental increase in the salary cost. That's what this is a reflection of, is the incremental increase in salary to go from, for example, an administrative associate that perhaps they were hired at, to now an actual accountant. And then from the accountant, after they have more years of experience, is that, that may become a senior accountant. And that position is reallocated to a senior accountant. And there's lots of variations. I think what you're thinking is if there's a vacancy as a senior accountant.
No, I thought that we have six steps.
No, this is separate.
And this is, you come in at the lower line, and then you.
The steps are built into the budget process.
Yeah, the steps are budgeted. So as long as they would stay administrative associate, they would be going through the steps. The council has already approved that range of those steps. It actually is when it's going from one classification to another classification.
Other classification, okay.
Based on that they have now attained the skill.
But you don't necessarily have a vacancy. And every one of these is reviewed in detail, and as you'll see, not very many of them are approved.
Right.
And I think it's actually noteworthy from a standpoint of just position control and budgetary control, even something as relatively low level as approving an existing position to go from one class to another in the budget process, that is brought to council to consider.
Position market adjustment?
If I could.
Is that the number that we had agreed in the GMA contract? Or is this in addition to those?
This is in addition to those.
Okay.
These position market adjustments are, one classification is for librarian, and the other classification, or I could have Matt come up and speak.
Is the engineers involved in this one?
I don't believe so. Just transportation, or the traffic engineer is.
Traffic engineers, okay. Because, so Steve's going to have to deal through that $2 million to deal with his plan checker engineers.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So this is in addition? This is something else that's not in public works?
These are items that have come through in the budget process. Departments that have recognized some real difficulties relative to recruitment and retention. A big chunk of that number of, in the position market adjustments, has come from library. We're having a heck of a time recruiting for entry-level librarians. We're not so, we're not looking so badly in the traditional ten-city labor market. But competing with LA County Library and LA City Library has been very, very difficult. And so what we're recommending is a 5% adjustment at the entry-level library step.
I would strongly suggest you guys look at the engineering field. Because from what I understand and what I hear internally, you're going to start losing a lot of engineers in this town.
I couldn't agree with you more, sir. Engineering, even police officers, librarians, IT people, we have some real challenges now that we never had before.
And there are a lot of them going overseas.
The only other one left on this slide is position additions, and you see them listed here. There are seven positions added to the general fund, and the departments that they belong to, HR, police, planning, and public works. And the additional cost is $295,301.
What are we adding in planning?
Planning, we're adding the office services specialist.
Ron, let me see this. Let's have Hassan come up and address that. And departments that are here, HR, the HR person in police is really HR's position, working in the police department. But all three department managers can respond to those for you. Hassan, on the planning positions?
I think they're all, I just need to know what planning.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The two positions in the planning department are actually converting positions that we have been maintaining as hourly positions. One would be an office service specialist, one, and the other one would be a mobility planner. Both those positions, we actually have had the need. The mobility planner especially has been very difficult to maintain, an hourly planner, because we had a very good person who left for a full-time job, and because there was no prospect of them getting a job here. That particular position is because, as you know, we're going to start updating the general plan, a mobility planner, to implement the mobility study as part of our general plan, and make sure that there is coordination in the general plan, is an important part of the program. This saves us considerable amount of money that we would otherwise have to hire outside consultants to do, really, really high-paying consultants to do that piece of the work. And then we could hire that at a planner level. And the office services specialist, we actually have had an hourly that has been working full-time for two, three years. There was an audit done by the human resources department at the end of '05 that determined that that was a necessary position due to the high level of administrative work that we do for all of our public meetings and the notices, et cetera. These are simply conversions of hourlies to full-time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron? Any of the others?
No. The rest, I understand them.
Okay.
So the summation on the recommended column is $2,075,701. And I will repeat this, here's the repetition of the summary that we looked at a few minutes ago, showing that our revised surplus for the general fund is at $334,947. And we went through the detail on the revenues and expenses, and we talked about the prior year surplus and so forth. With that, I will go through one more slide, and these are our non-general fund service level requests and recommendations.
On page 13.
On slide number 13.
You have one from the bottom. It says various positions additions. Request was $674,000, it's only $104,000. What is that? Is that what was in here, or?
No, no, that, we went through the general fund additions.
This is now all the other funds.
These are all the other funds now.
Right. But what are those positions?
Sure. My apologies, Mr. Giuseffian, I should have listed out those additions, and I did not. So we have.
It's only $104,000.
Very many.
No, it's not one or two.
One or two, yeah.
We have a customer service representative in our parking fund.
Okay.
So that's basically issuing traffic citations. That is $54,000. And then we have one other one, which is.
Public Works.
Right.
Okay.
We have four in the integrated ways.
Conversion of existing contract.
That's fine.
Right. Now, it's actually, it's actually four hourly conversions into integrated waste workers.
Okay. And we're still following the policy council set up a long time ago, dealing with hourlies, right?
Absolutely, yes.
So we're not, okay.
Yes, we are.
You see a lot of nodding of the heads, yes.
Would you like me to go line on, by line, and through these?
No, I'm done.
Anybody else?
No. Any other concerns?
Actually, I have no other questions. I'm done.
I made concerns from the other councilmen.
Yes.
I'm just telling you, I don't have any questions. So you won't hear from me again. Not with this, but everything else.
I don't feel you have to fill in.
No, I think we're okay then, Ron, with that slide.
You know, they're saying nature abhors the vacuum.
I will quickly go through the remainder of the presentation. It's mainly historical, but also get to provide council with perspective on different threats that we have faced and overcome, and also new threats that are coming on the horizon. As a background, here's our general fund surplus slash deficit for approximately the last 20 years. The three years that you see that are most recent in '04, '05, and '06, those deficits are direct results of land purchases. And if you can read the bottom of that slide, you'll see the dollar amounts and so forth for those land purchases. We are projecting an eight-and-a-half million dollar surplus for this year. What you see on the slide is 6.5, and again, that takes into account setting aside $2 million in reserve for that permit services fund that we talked about. And next year, we are looking at the $334,000 that we just went through. Here's a picture of our general fund budget.
Ron, if I can.
Sure.
Had this table reflected what we had budgeted versus what we actually experienced, you would have seen the budgeted amount much more like what we're budgeting in '08, which is a relatively small estimated ending surplus. But at the end of the year, you actually have more savings than we usually anticipate.
Correct. And that's due to our salary savings and not being fully staffed for all 12 months. Correct. The next slide shows our general fund budget and reserve. The line that you see there is our reserve percentage, which is reflected on the right side of the scale. So we are estimating to end this year at 630,07, at just below our 35%. We should be around 34-point-something percent for our general fund reserve. And then you see the bars, the tallest bar is our general fund budget as it keeps increasing, and then the reserve is the lower bar, and then the line is just a percentage of those two bars, the ratio.
What it will take to make that 35%? How much?
Our budget's $160 million, so 1% is 1.6 million.
Ron, does this include the $2 million we put into the building permit fund?
I do not recall that, Jim, if I took that into account.
And the difference could be, rather than putting $2 million in, you put $1 million in. Frankly, at the end of '08, if you have a normal year-end surplus, you'll be over the 35%. I mean, if we were to recognize even a modicum of the actual savings you've had for the past eight years in the general fund at year-end, you'd be past the 35%. Again, budget's very conservative at this point, but you're so close that the estimated surplus at the end of '07, '08 of $300 and some odd thousand, likelihood that'll be, that could very well be close to $2 or $3 million, and you'll be well over the 35%.
Correct.
And that could be mid-year, frankly, the mid-year budget report that you get could place you at that level at that point as we do our year-end estimates.
But that was our policy. Our policy was to be at 35.
That's right.
So I'd like to see.
Wait, I thought you said you were all done, Mr. Giuseffian.
No, well, we're off $1 million. I want to know if that $2 million part of it is not. If it is, then we're, you know, we need to stick with our policy, which was 35%.
I have a question in that regard. And you can flip between this graph, this chart and the one previously. When there's a surplus, okay, '03, there was a $5 million surplus. What exactly happens to that? Do we hold that ready to use next year if necessary? Or do we salt it away in our reserves and?
Our reserves, by policy.
Well, let's not get, we often speak of the fund balance in the general fund as a reserve. It's the fund balance. It's like your retained earnings in one of your enterprise accounts. Anything you don't spend stays in the general fund unless you direct it to go someplace else. So what we call the reserve is the fund balance, correct, Ron?
Correct.
The charter requires that you actually have a reserve that's equivalent to about 50% of your total property tax revenues. That would be in the neighborhood of $14 or $15 million for the next year, Ron?
It's on the first page.
It's on this charter reserve line up near the top.
Okay, $19 million.
$19 million.
Now, and I think that's actually more than half of our property tax revenues.
If you count the EREF money, it's right there.
But in any case, that's what the charter says you should have as a reserve. And frankly, that was established back in the days when property tax revenues were your largest single revenue source in a general fund, sometimes 25, 30% of your total revenue sources. And because property taxes have historically only come to you twice a year, in November, December, after you've made your payment on your home, and then again, following the April payment, sometimes there was a need in cities to do what was called revenue anticipation notes, essentially borrow in the beginning of the year until you got your property tax payments. So being a very conservative community in our charter, it required that we have a reserve equivalent to at least half of our property tax revenues, so we wouldn't have to borrow to meet the cash flow during the first five or six months of the fiscal year. Well, that has, you know, that's gone by the wayside a long time ago, but we still have this reserve requirement. So you have a reserve requirement that was based on a historic cash flow need that actually doesn't exist anymore, but it's still carried in our charter. In addition to the $19 million, then, we have a fund balance that we tend to call a reserve, but a fund balance that is beyond the $19 million. What's the projected number, Ron?
It's up there on the screen, 52 million.
$52.5 million estimated for the end of '07, '08. And the likelihood is, if our savings just average what they have for the past eight years, you'll have $3, $4, $5 million in addition to that at the end of '07, '08. And we'd have a sense of that probably by our mid-year budget report. So we call it a reserve. In actuality, the only requirement that you have is the 19.2 million. This council could by policy decide that you want to spend your reserves down to the 19.2. Perfectly legal. You'd need to take an action to change your reserve policy, but that would take three votes, and you could do that. Or you could direct that money be put someplace else. It could go in your capital improvement fund, as you did for three years from '03 through '07. The council made a decision to utilize that part of your reserves, or your fund balance, not your required reserve, to purchase open space. And that's why you saw the dip in the reserves, and now we're building it back up again. You could make that decision again if you wanted to.
You know, is it prudent to have a forced savings plan at the end of each year when we do see a budget surplus?
That was the 35%.
Well, that's a, that's a level. That's the 50 million. But each year, let's say this year we've got, let's say it's a $1 million, to salt away 20% right off the top and put it in our reserve. And whatever that is, if it's a $10 million surplus, 20% right off the top, off of the fund balance into the reserve. Mr. Starber.
Well, my suggestion would be, for example, when you establish a reserve at a percentage, then the nominal dollar amount's always going to grow with inflation, because frankly, your expenditure, your budget grows with inflation.
Right.
So 35% for '07, '08 is going to be a smaller dollar amount than it will be in '08, '09. So you'll automatically have to put some additional money into your reserve to maintain your 35%. I think, as I've always recommended to council, I think you need to utilize that funds based on the council's priority. Don't hem yourself in to a policy that you then frankly find is a barrier to making the decisions and policies that you want to. Let's say there is another piece of open space this council thinks is a very high priority for the community. You can reduce programs, you can reduce your CIP to make room for it, or you could decide it's important enough to invest a piece of your fund balance in order to go make that purchase. You did that for three pieces of open space, and as a result, our reserves dipped down.
And Mr. Starber, as been said, we could have the people form an assessment district if they want it.
Right, that too.
That's what I publicly said after Flint. That's the end of it. Now on, you want it, assessment district, and it's yours.
Mr. Quintero.
That's the end of it for you.
Well, okay. You can agree to disagree.
I have a question, probably the treasurer will answer it. I have a question, probably the treasurer will answer it. The $52 million balance, how is that invested in view of the fact that it is a reserve? Does it look that differently in terms of the length of...
Well, Ron's coming up, just let me note that the charter reserve, because we have such large investment reserves, now cash balances, frankly, the issue of cash flow, except for Ron's investment strategies, the city no longer has a situation where we don't have enough cash to meet our needs in the first part of the year, because we do have such a large commingled investment pool. That may pose problems for Ron as he scurries to get money to pay for a particular piece of land. As a result, he's got to get us out of some investments he'd made. But on a cash flow basis, this city is in the very enviable position of really not needing to worry about the purposes for which the charter reserve was originally established.
But I'm thinking of the fund balance, whether that's appropriate.
Yes, that's right. Mayor Najarian, Councilman Quintero, other council members. The city treasurer does not manage the reserves differently than the city portfolio. The city reserves are included in the city portfolio. Basically, I look at the entire city portfolio as basically being the entire pot. And Mr. Starbuck is correct. The real issue that I have is one of determining liquidity, basically having enough cash flow to meet the anticipated expenses that are going to be coming out of this city portfolio during the next 12 to 18 months. If in fact we changed the reserve position, that immediately would impact my decision-making process for basically managing the investment plan. In other words, I'll probably have to shorten up if in fact I anticipated by council decision that we would be spending more money out of the city portfolio, whether it's called reserves or what, capital improvement or wherever.
So what's the total amount that you're playing with, Ron?
Playing's probably not a good word.
The city treasurer does not play with the money.
The investment portfolio, Ron?
Total, everything.
Right now, just a smidge under $500 million.
And 50 is this, 50 is a general.
50 is general fund.
A lot of it has to do with basically money set aside in the electric fund, the power fund, the sewer fund, contingency funds. Mr. Ehlers would probably give you a better idea as to where the bulk of those dollars happen to be.
And what's the largest component of that?
Would it be electric?
It'd be GWP.
It is GWP, about $125 million. Next is sewer at about $72 million.
Next is general fund. That is 52. We brought you in years past, we can certainly do this again, I think last year we reviewed the entire fund balance, enterprise fund balance in all of our 60 or so funds, and talked about the limitations on the use of that. Again, in the community, there's a perception that Glendale, one is a very wealthy community, and that we have these very large, what's called, reserves. We did a comparison a year or so ago with other communities of our same stature, you know, same size budget, has utilities, has the same kind of cash flow. And frankly, we're right in there relative to the amount of investment portfolio and the level of reserves. Some wealthier communities in Glendale, and believe me, Glendale, from the standpoint of our revenue that's generated per capita, is very average. Perception is we're wealthy. The reality is, from a budgeting standpoint, we are very average in terms of sales tax revenues. Property taxes may be a little bit above the average, but most of the revenues that we generate in the general fund are very much about the statewide average. But because we've always been very conservative, because we have a strong enterprise operations in Glendale, broader than the vast majority of cities, we have landfill, trash collection, sewer, water, electric utilities, those all have their own reserves, and most cities do not have that breadth of enterprise operation. For that reason, we have a much larger budget than a community of our size normally, and we have investment portfolio balances much larger than most cities. But if you look at Burbank, Pasadena, Anaheim, Santa Ana, you get out to Riverside where they have their own utilities as well, we're very comparable to what we see in those communities in terms of the levels of fund balances that we have in Glendale.
So out of that, you know, it's, sometimes you get carried away and you lose perspective. Out of a $500, $600 million portfolio, those are all earmarked for those different departments. The money that we're, you know, let's say not free, but with the less string, least amount of strings on it, is at 52.4 million, but there's $19 million by charter, $20 million, let's say, that we have to retain. So there's really only $30 million or so that's available for...
You can spend on any purpose.
This fund and your CIP, what we call the general fund portion of the CIP, that money has the least amount of strings. I mean, provided that it's spent on a public purpose determined by the city council, you can spend it for just about anything you want to.
And we're below our 35%.
You're below your 35%, but you are very, very close.
You're within a percent.
We're close. Okay, so we're right about...
Yeah. And my encouragement would be when you have a year-end surplus like we are this year, you should make a decision then. You might, you might feel it's worthwhile to invest a portion of that savings in Mr. Zern's street reconstruction program, because as an investment, that will probably pay you more dividends long-term than Ron will ever gain on the interest he'll earn on that investing it, because streets that deteriorate to the point you have to reconstruct them will cost you 10 times as much as maintaining them today. So those kinds of decisions are ones that you can make as you, as you see what you have at the end of each year.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, that's an accurate observation, but these other funds can also be used by the city for the general fund.
We have a number of limitations. For example, Glendale Water Power, we are subject to the charter limitation that we can't transfer more than 25% of the operating revenue.
I'm well aware of that. But we can't transfer above 25% and...
Well, no, not necessarily.
No, we cannot.
No. In fact, Mr. Quintero, Mr. Mayor, you'd need to look at every fund.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
For example, the housing fund. That money has to be used for housing, the low moderate income fund. You couldn't transfer it to the general fund, you couldn't use it for general capital. The redevelopment agency fund, that money generally has to be used for redevelopment purposes, but if the council really wanted to spend it for non-redevelopment, you could use a portion of it to repay the loan that's outstanding, and then it would free that up to be used like general fund money. Most of your resources are in special revenue or enterprise funds and are limited either by statute or by initiative like Proposition 218 on the use of the funds. That doesn't mean there isn't some way that you can find some flexibility like with redevelopment, but for the most part, the vast majority of your $500 million is limited in what the council can use it for.
Well, I'd like to explore what those limitations are, just to get a general feel for what is actually feasible, not that we anticipate doing it, but just to know.
If I can, we've done that before, and we'd be happy to bring it back again. It's a good education to look at where all of our reserve money is and what the limitations that are attached to it. Sure.
I found out something yesterday, so I hope Mr. Zern and our city attorneys paying attention to this. Yesterday, in Burbank Airport, we got a letter from the Water Resources Board, State Water Resources Board. The State Water Resources Board has gone out and basically has a different perspective on NPDS. And based on their new understanding of what the language says, they have sent letters to several cities, including City of Burbank, and I'm pretty sure we will be getting it soon, nullifying permits that are issued on projects. Their new interpretation is that all the runoff from that project needs to be captured, clarified, and pumped into the ground. And that includes all cities. We have a permit under the County of Los Angeles for our NPDS. What the state, that's for your storm runoff.
That's true.
Right. So the State Resources Board, Water Resources Board, basically has taken that a step further and saying, basically capturing the trash and all the grills that we put out around to capture all the stuff is no longer accepted. What they want us to do is capture all that water, clean it, and pump it back into the ground. Now, Mr. Zern, if you haven't gotten that, you're going to get that, and this council needs to be aware of that.
We've known it for years.
Because, well, we didn't have to pump it back into the ground and clarify it. They want us to capture all of that, clean it. In the old, in the past, you could have just put it into the storm runoff and let it in the channel and let it go. They want you to put it, pump it into the ground. Now, in some places, like in Burbank Airport, we're going to probably have some problems because the EPA required that site to be capped. We do not want water to be penetrating so the plume of pollution doesn't get in the water source. But we're going to have to deal with that. It's a huge price tag attached to that. My suggestion to both of the attorney and Mr. Zern is to get ahold of your counterparts in Burbank, because they have gotten it, and also Pasadena, and figure out a way around that, because we're talking about multimillion dollar price tag. If we have to capture all of our rainwater in this city and clean it, I don't know where the heck we're going to put it.
Into the aquifer or...
Into the ground, yes. That's the new State Water Resources Board's requirement.
Requirement.
And they're canceling, they're saying even though Building and Safety issues a permit, they send a letter saying that we are nullifying your permits. And the reason we found out, because in Burbank, the airport is doing several projects, and we get this letter saying your permit is not good, so now we have to hire an attorney, go out there, fight it, and do all that stuff.
So your point is there may be some strains on funds wherever to comply with this.
None of that stuff is figured out in any of these figures.
I just want to say, when I was with the Corps of Engineers, that new legislation came down, and it's been a subject of a lot of controversy and legal things because of that. How can you do it? Physically, it's impossible. It's great to make the rules like that, but nobody thought through the process. You might be able to trap stuff, but to trap the water going in, how are you going to do that?
It's impossible. Boston does it.
Come on, the LA River, look at it. That was my project. There's stuff in that river all the time, and you're not going to stop it. You can cut it down. You can't cut the water down that's coming in.
I haven't read the regulations, so I don't...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council...
It's going to be challenged.
One of the issues that the Water Board has long been pushing for is exactly this. This is not new to us. We know that... And let me make a distinction. What you're seeing, Mr. Yusefian, is project-based water containment. So as you take a permit out to build or construct, whether it's a building or a tract of homes, that's what they want you to do. They would love, their preferred method of dealing with the stormwater is infiltration. That's how they would like it done. They would like you to have that water naturally infiltrate into the landscaped areas, so less hardscape, more landscape.
Let me throw in one other. During the late '80s, early '90s, Corps of Engineers put in a rubber dam in the LA River in the Burbank area, 10-foot high, bristone rubber, two inches thick, so guys could shoot holes in it. The whole idea was to trap the water behind the dam, which would deflate during a flooding event, and pump it out and put it into the spreading grounds along Forest Lawn Drive there. Got the whole thing done, we tested it, it worked perfect. We were trapping the water coming out of the Toma Treatment Plant that had already been treated. State denied that, said the water wasn't pure enough to be into the spreading grounds to be infiltrated. Now, that's coming out of a treatment plant. So I don't know where they're coming from when they say start capturing all the water, it's untreated.
That was Governor Brown.
It's totally ridiculous. That water's going to go to the ocean and get diluted just like everything else.
They're saying they want it treated. That's what they're saying. And it's not, it's not just during, it's not just during...
It's never going to happen.
It's not during construction alone. So that carries to, so after you build this project, it's done, all the rainwater that is generated that comes down, it no longer percolates because you've got roof, building, this and that, they want you now to capture all that, clean it, and deal with it. So this is new. I mean, I understand all the old stuff. This is new, which has freaked out a lot of people, so I'm suggesting you take a look at that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, it's actually, it isn't new. I mean, it's coming to a head more now, but I think as long as I've been...
They're forcing us now.
Right, as long as I've been, and we're under the same permit, our permit's coming up for expiration next month, but I can guarantee it won't be renewed, it's just not ready. We're watching Ventura, because they're very similar to us, so we'll see what happens with them, and they're going through a heck of a fight right now. But I can tell you, and as I, not to cry wolf in this whole thing, but what I believe the environmental regulatory attitude is, they would ultimately like us, or would like to mandate us, to capture every drop of runoff and have it treated, as we do with sewage. So the same thing, you'd have separate treatment plants. I can tell you that we've been actively looking at how we can do that now. In other words, how we can at least the first inch, three quarters of an inch of a rain event, how we can capture that and divert it into the sewer system. And each catch basin would catch that water, or what goes into a catch basin, and divert that into the sewer system to have it treated. I can tell you, that's going to create a whole bunch of different problems, because now you're going to surcharge the treatment plant, and you'll bring in a whole level of constituents that may or not be conducive to the treatment of sewage. You know, there's a lot of bacterial treatment at a wastewater plant. You bring in heavy metals and some of the things that naturally occur in the street and road system, that may kill the bacteria, which then throws off the wastewater treatment. So what's left? A separate treatment plant? But let me tell you, we continue, we have a full crew working on this continually. We attend every meeting there is to attend. We argue, we fight, we push for our permit to be reasonable, but Mr. Yusefian, you're right. They would love to see, at least for now, every new project be totally self-contained.
They're sending letters saying your permit's been canceled.
Okay, let me, let me just...
Yes, and we're fighting.
Let me just recommend, when, Mr. Starbuck, when you come back with the highlighting all our fund balances and the discretionary transfers that are available, also include a section on potential nondiscretionary expenditures that we may be, large ticket items like this that may be cropping up on the horizon.
We'll do a list of...
Just so we see what there is.
Well, we'll do a list of threats. I mean, this is kind of like a threat assessment. UT is one of those, and we'll do a threat assessment.
So we can just take a look at it.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm preparing to bring to you, I wanted you to get through this, have the opportunity to get through this and take your breath, take a breath, to bring to you the discussion on the implementation or consideration of an implementation of a stormwater-based utility fee. We don't have that right now. Technically, the general fund would have to foot the bill, and it can be mighty high, as you can see from this.
You're going to have to build a new treatment plant. I'm glad that we kept Lagfil, because that's...
Lagwarp.
Lagwarp, because that would be the location that we will probably have to build a whole different system, probably do reverse osmosis to clean all the water.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing I'd like to add, Mr. Mayor, when you're coming back, I'd like to see one thing that has not been broken down in here. There's a big chunk, it just talks about salaries. There's a big chunk of money, and says this is the salaries. What I'd like to know in the salary, break it down by department, what I want to know is each department, what is their salary and what is their overtime? I want to see the overtime budgets for every single department. And I want to see it for the last two years, last year and the year before, and what the proposed is going to be.
As for me, I'm not interested in that. So ask the rest of the council if they want that.
Mr. Yusefian, you actually, you actually have that, we can distill it down for you in just one...
Just distill it down for me, please.
Okay, Ron, let's go to the next slide.
Actually, what you have in front of you is background slides, and I can take any questions that you have on that, otherwise we can finish.
We covered contingencies. We covered potential use of reserves and things. We have a blimp accident in Glendale. Since we're covering every possible failure, disaster, or requirement, governmental requirement that may come up. I'm only kidding.
Was wondering how I was going to respond.
With a straight face, too.
Let me, Mr. Mayor, if I can, let me say again, Glendale is in an enviable position of having considerable fund balances, and in the time of a significant disaster, your ability to respond to that is significantly improved because of the level of resources you have at your disposal.
What we have next is our public hearing on the agenda for tonight, and then next Tuesday, we shall adopt the budget, which will be a number of different reports dealing with the housing budget, redevelopment, city budget, and transfers from GWP and so forth. So we will do that next Tuesday.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, we'll be coming back right after that for a discussion on a schedule to then take up the discussion of the unfunded items on the CIP, as well as reporting back and some schedules for some study sessions, for example, on the reserves and fund balances and uses and constraints. I think that'd be a very useful one-hour discussion to have, very educational, not only for you, but also for the public. But we'll come back shortly after July 1 and have a conversation about a schedule that we can then set up of a series of study sessions to get into those areas.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get that list on June 26? Have the list of the scheduled items that are going to be discussed?
Certainly can. Frankly, it's a matter of looking at your calendars. We'll line out a number of Tuesday morning study sessions, but we can circulate a list around, and you can begin to check your calendars.
Well, June 3, you're going to have two council members out. Well, June 3, you're going to have two council members out.
I mean, July 3.
July 3.
Right.
So, after July 3, you probably...
Well, and frankly, I had anticipated needing some time to pull some details together about the unfunded projects. For example, soccer fields or dog park, you saw some conceptual designs, but we don't have a lot of information on what something like that might cost.
I thought the number-one issue was going to be discussed was mountain oaks.
Well, that may be yours. I'm not sure the rest of your colleagues would necessarily agree. So, we can just bring the list back and find out how you'd like to prioritize it.
Okay.
Was there some discussion on that?
Yeah.
About the number-one, two, three, or four priority?
No, but I asked for that item to be put on the agenda so we can discuss it, what we're going to do with it, since there were too many people in the audience in the last couple of sessions asking about it, what we're going to do about it, and so on and so forth. So, I thought the best thing to do is to find out what are the remedies that are available to the council to deal with mountain oaks.
But that was last week's discussion.
Right.
We didn't discuss it when you were gone, so...
Yeah, I want to know what we can do.
You had the city attorney in planning, preparing a report on, I'll call it, the entitlement limitations for mountain oaks. And as I noted then, that's the kind of information you'd need to have a conversation about any role the city might play in that property. I would anticipate, we don't have a full city council till the meeting of July 17, so we can certainly have that list.
You may not.
Oh, may not even then. Well, the first council meeting in July that we have a full city council, we'll bring the list back and begin to look at calendars and set out a schedule.
Yes, sort of.
In the meantime, we'll be gathering information we need on all the various unfunded items on your list so we can try and get ahead of the curve.
And, Mr. Mayor, for me, I'd like to see the list on June 26, based on experience I've had in this city. What happens is I know summertime, people have to have vacations, this and that, and somehow, by the time we come back from summer vacations, other issues come up, and things kind of get lost in the process. So, what I would like to see is at least on the 26, have a list of the items that we talked about.
Okay, that's easy enough.
And then we can prioritize it and just go over it and find out which ones we deal with first, and the second, third, and then we plug it in, and so this way we know it's done.
Bring your calendars on the 26.
Well, when you say prioritize, I mean, that's sort of...
I think he means, I mean, I think he means to talk about, not to go do, but to talk about, to discuss subsequent study sessions.
The order of discussion.
Rather than the...
Rather than prioritize.
Right.
Okay. I have two speaker cards, one from Nancy Kent, the other from John Fitzgerald, if he's still here, from the fire department.
I think he's gone. Nancy?
Nancy, you're up.
My name's Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale, and from comments at recent city council meetings, it's my understanding that beeline buses have to travel to Burbank for fueling, and this causes us to pay for driver time and fuel to go there, and also adds to air pollution. So, I am here to advocate building the proposed maintenance and fueling building for beeline buses sooner rather than later, and I think that this is not a glamorous project, but it does seem to be one that's necessary. And next point, every once in a while, I mention this nickels and dimes issue, but I would advocate for cutting back on the number of free giveaway items that city departments offer at special events, things like pens, keychains, rulers, Post-it pads, water bottles, baseball caps, all with the City of Glendale or the name of a city department printed on them.
Computers? You forgot the computers from...
I haven't been to that special event, but...
That doesn't happen very often.
Okay. Even though this is nickels and dimes, I feel that it gives the impression that the city has more money than it knows what to do with, and I think Glendale is a wonderful city, and I don't think we need to advertise it in this way. Last point, thank you to Councilman Yusefian for the reminder that members of the public often question the use of consultants and prefer to have city staff hired for the work here. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. John Fitzgerald, I believe he's left from the fire department. Okay, that's all we have.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Move to adjourn. Second?
There is a second.
We adjourn.